Evening, everyone. Welcome to the District of Brown Deer's Regular Board Meeting for the evening of April twenty fifth. I will call this meeting to order at six oh three P M. Verification of public notice, the meeting has been publicly noticed. Verification of a quorum, we do have five of the seven board members in attendance. Um, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. What was that?
I think it's six.
Yeah. Oh, he's on. Yeah, okay. I apologize. You're right. It was six.
Who's missing?
I think it's all seven of them.
I'm on my way.
I think we have five in person.
So it's all seven. Alright, so we have all seven board members. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, seven to zero. Alright, the mission statement is together with our families and community, we will inspire students to be passionate learners, creative thinkers, and innovative leaders who enrich our world. Alright, so we will start off this evening with District Communication. Uh, the strategic planning update by Mr. Ted Natski, C S six.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, good evening, everyone. Mr. Natski sent a video for us to review on today. And uh, he will provide in the video, he will provide a overview of what transpired uh, during during the five sessions of strategic planning. And what I have done is um invited him to the May ninth. Special board meeting in the event uh that you all have any additional questions. Uh, people may come self-located virtually uh to respond. Uh, so if there aren't any questions, he will not be with us, but if there are, we ask to give them to us in advance so he can respond. Uh, and so with that being said, um, yeah, if you would press play.
Absolutely. And Dr. Beadle, if you could just let us know where those that are um viewing in, if you could just make sure that you can hear the sound, okay?
Alright, sounds good. I can hear it.
Okay.
It's Ted Natski here from C S six, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on how strategic planning has been going. So I'm pretty excited because the team that was put together uh by the superintendent and her administrative group was phenomenal. I have never had the experience in working with, you know, I don't know, hundreds of schools where there are students participating, parents participating, and school board members participating along with the teachers, the staff, and the support team. And that went really, really well. So what did we do? We created the conditions for success for the future. The first thing we did was we worked through this text.
Have they started the video as of yet?
Certified your staff in the ability to actually deploy the strategic objectives that will be defined here in the very near future. What does that mean? Well, it means we've got a key language around leadership. We now understand the principles of change.
One second, I'm gonna pause it.
So, share audio.
I did. So, um, let me uh see if I can.
I'm here. So, here's me. I'm here. I was like, yep, yep, good.
So I'm gonna try and share it from this. Then did it work? That's um let's see. Um, Dr. Brown, I um, I don't have shared screen, so I don't know if you can. I'm trying something.
Try this again. Alright, so if I try it again here.
Yeah, let's let's say it. Press play. And try it.
Yes, this seems like it's not done right now.
Alright, okay, so we'll, we'll move on and then come back here to
District Administrative Report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, I want to say congratulations um to all of our board members who are serving in their respective roles pretty much once again. Uh, we had our organizational meeting last night. Just want to say congratulations to everyone um for running and fulfilling these roles as we move forward. So thank you very much. Um, just a few updates with the District Administrative Report. We um had our Service Above Self Award Ceremony yesterday with Rotary um at the Sheridan. We recognized two of our students who were awarded the Service Above Self um Awards yesterday. So I went over and introduced our students and we were um we were blessed to be graced with one of the Assistant State Superintendents from the Department of Public Instruction of Libraries and Technology came and joined us and congratulated our students as well. Uh, so it was a very nice event. Um, so two students were recognized with that. Uh, we are continuing to engage in our Spark Higher interviews. Uh, we join our Spark Higher interviews to determine the top candidates for our Buildings and Grounds Director. Uh, so we will select the three candidates who will, we will bring forth for in-person interviews. Um, I attended the joint Village Board Meeting uh last week. And uh, we also had a um safety, um, a district-wide safety meeting last week where I had a virtual meeting with the staff in relation to uh some incidences that are happening uh not here in the school district of Brown Deer, but in surrounding schools. And I felt the need to inform our parents, our community, our family, families and our staff um of what is happening around us. Um, as we know, when it gets warmer outside, more things tend to happen. And so um all of us being vigilant in that space is is always important. So there was a, there was a reminder meeting that I had with the staff last week. Um, we also had a wonderful Wall of Inspiration program. This is a program hosted by the Ed Foundation where we recognize eight individuals uh from the community who are either former alum or have uh worked here or were students here um to recognize their outstanding accomplishments and for their contribution to the school district of Brown Deer. So that happened last Friday at five o'clock in the library. Um, and then at about, at that time, our Fine Arts Program was happening. Um, so recognizing our students in art and music, choir, uh and band, uh we had an opportunity to do um in a round robin format to visit those um respective areas and um take a look or hear the work that our students um have been um engaging in. And so um a great big thank you to the staff who put a lot of time into making the Fine Arts Program Night a success. And then later that evening, we had our Puff's Play, which is a um parody, if you will, of um Harry Potter. And I fully admit, I am not a Harry Potter fan, and so that whole play was pretty much over my head. I was able to laugh maybe one or two times, but other than that, I'm not a Harry Potter fan, but it was not about me. Um, but I succeeded in a very nice job of play. And so um that's just a brief update of what work or what has been happening so far. And we're really just trying to put together all of the activities that we know we need to plan for um the remainder of the school week, school year, to close out in a positive way. So that's a little bit about what's happening. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Brown. Any questions on the Administrator's Report? Alright, very good. Um, Ms. Turner, are we ready to go?
Try it again.
Dr. Beadle is not right now.
No, I, I'm gonna send him the video as well. So just, okay, so well. Our time? I wonder what's going on, so I just gonna this computer, I'm not exactly sure, but I have it up here. So if Dr. Beadle's not on the chair from the screen, he can all be right.
Hello, Brown Deer School Board. It's Ted Natski here from C S six, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on how strategic planning has been going. So I'm pretty excited because the team that was put together uh by the superintendent and her administrative group was phenomenal. I have never had the experience in working with, you know, I don't know, hundreds of schools where there are students participating, parents participating, and school board members participating along with the teachers, the staff, and the support team. And that went really, really well. So what did we do? We created the conditions for success for the future. The first thing we did was we worked through this text. And what this did was this certified your staff in the ability to actually deploy the strategic objectives that will be defined here in the very near future. What does that mean? Well, it means we've got a key language around leadership. We now understand the principles of change, the behaviors of people in the change and within the organization. And most importantly, the tools we can use in order to address all of the different problems and opportunities for improvement that we face. One of the key learnings for the organization is this, every time we have a problem, we need to put in place a process. This guide provides all the processes we need in order for Brown Deer to be the highest performing school district that there is. So next steps are to design and develop the key performance indicators, which we'll be doing with a small kind of fluid rapid team here in the future. We'll be bringing that to the board with suggested strategies. The board will be approving what that looks like, where that is, and the journey as we move forward. From there, we will be designing and developing the plans on a page that will work within the departments, the divisions, and most importantly, within the schools, so that eventually the goals go right into the classroom, so we can see that improvement. So what does that look like? We'll be designing key performance indicators that say things like, all of our graduates will graduate with a ticket, not a receipt of their journey, and that ticket allows them credits into colleges, universities, and technical schools. Applicable certificates that allow them direct employment and opportunities while in high school for things like youth apprenticeships and participation. Key strategies that will define how Brown Deer is not only going to be different, but be the best for kids possible. Key financial strategies around our, the amount of money we have as our fund balance, what we do for health benefits, how we are staying just not just competitive with our different um compensation strategies, but how we're leading with those compensation strategies, our teacher engagement, our parent engagement, and most importantly, our student engagement. Key indicators that identify all of these behaviors driven by all the processes here. So our four meetings that we had at Concordia University were phenomenal. I want to thank Monica and her team for putting it all together. Donna was fantastic. And basically, at the end of the day here, where Brown Deer will be is you will be strategically aligned. You have documents that you can go into the community and show, here is the proof of our work and what we're doing, and a very clean, clear communication strategy and tool. So what's it all mean in the end? When you launch into the next school year in August, you're gonna be in a position as a school system, as a school board, as a system of staff, and most importantly, an organization of students, where you will be able to clearly define, this is what excellence in learning looks like. This is what excellence in operation looks like in finances. This is what excellence looks like in the engagement of our staff, students, and our population, and this is what safe schools look like. Very clean, very clear. And last, I just want to share this. I don't often get into environments where I'm leading, and I learn a lot. And I learned a ton through the Brown Deer Process as we started here. What I learned was that you have produced students like the three who came, or the four who came each week or each month each time. And how courageous they were, how successful they're gonna be, how intelligent they are, and yet how humble they are. I learned that your staff has high passion for the work and is looking for governance to support their ability to take risks, do new things, and fund innovations. I learned that your administrative team has such high levels of ownership in the success that they would choose to go back to their buildings to ensure the success of the people that they support and serve. I learned that the parents of Brown Deer who participated in the process care so much that they asked hard questions in the room. I learned that the board members who were there have such, such passion to ensure that at the end that the Brown Deer School District is one of the best, not just in the area, not just in the region, but the state and the country, that they too are willing to make commitments, make assurances, and most importantly, learn along so that they could create positive pressure to ensure the success of the organization. I will see you in a couple of weeks for more questions, but I wanted to make sure you knew where we've come along and how proud I am of the work of your team. It was exceptional.
Are there any questions at this point in time on the strategic planning?
Just want to mention that I did um complete the report. I did send it to everyone, and you also have a copy there. And then I have another paperwork that I could bear if it is time.
Item for that, five B. So when um I think I missed uh where we're, where we're going at this point.
So the next um point in the process is um Mr. Natski will be here on campus with us on June second, meeting with uh each building principal and respective cabinet members uh to engage in the discussion regarding those key performance indicators. And then the next step after that will be um partnering, the continued partnership with C S six where um another individual named Jeannie Marie will come in and help dive that process and bring all of those pieces together. There are a couple more sessions that we need to work out. Um, we have, we're still in the midst of looking for dates for that to happen um in the midst of closing out the school year as, as well. So June second is the next day.
After June second, Dr. Brown, can you bring those K P I's to the board or send them to the board? If you're not gonna have board representation there, after you all have determined what they are.
Not at that point. It will be, the next, the next step is meeting with Jeannie to help pull all those pieces together.
So just to get a sense of what
We did on June second.
Yeah, well, not really what you done on June second, or do you want a board member represented? You said you're meeting with the principals and the cabinet. I think even if it's not um or Dorothea and I, I think that um there should be board representative. Is there any reason for there not to be?
It was at, at Ted's, we, it, it's more of the intricate details of what's like happening at the building level. So there wasn't a request for a board member. You gonna come on through?
Okay, well. And at this point, anyone can come because you don't need the um the foundation of what we learned in those four weeks in order to understand what they would be doing as far as determining K P I's. But if you, I will come, but it doesn't have to just be me, myself or um Dorothea, because it's something like that, like, oh, we learned in the four weeks, you wouldn't need that in order to understand. But I will come. What is a K P I? Key performance.
Right.
And how we know that, yeah. What, how we indicated that we met.
Helps us set the benchmarks by which we by doing the work and helping us understand if we're, if we're on the way to, to meeting those goals. Yeah, K P I's, goals, same.
When I started teaching stuff.
Alright. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next piece in our meeting is public comments. I only see a couple of people online, but I will ask, is there anyone with public comments on any of the items that we have on the agenda for this evening? Hearing and seeing. Done. Uh, we will continue on at this point. Moving on to the consent agenda. Um, can we get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion. Um, including the minutes of the March twenty first, twenty twenty three regular board meeting, the schedule of voucher payments via check, A C H, and wire transfers in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents in the general checking account and the food service account, including funds, ten, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-seven, forty-nine, fifty, seventy-two, and eighty, and the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three school safety drill update as presented tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Daniels, Ashley, can I get a second, please?
Yeah. Second. Sorry.
Thank you so much, Ms. Macon, for the second. Any discussion? Are those in favor with aye? Alright, any opposed? Alright, the motion carries six to zero. Alright, moving on then to the business office update, Mr. Fleming.
Good evening. Um, I did send you a brief memo, just highlighting a couple of things that we are working through, um, including providing the March twenty twenty-three Treasures Update. Cause it worked. Um, I, I did highlight a couple of things that we're seeing. Um, everything so far is running well. Um, from the salary perspective, um personnel costs, we are under budget. We're gonna be over a couple non-personnel areas, but it will certainly still um even out. And again, how we finish the year will be based on kind of what the board wants to do for the end of the year. As you recall, our budget was a, was a deficit budget to do an extensive transfer from ten to forty-six. We can look at, we know what that looks like. We'll be deciding how much of the extra three D money we, we um take advantage of this year um based on what a potential surplus should look like. And so we'll, we'll be having some discussions over the next couple of months as we um to close out the budget, to see what that would look like. Um, there's nothing at this point that's really, anybody have questions about any specific lines in the judgment report? Um, then just a couple other brief points is just to let you know that we are set to begin our benefit open enrollment process in a couple of weeks. Um, for our employees uh that begin May fifteenth through the twenty-sixth, we have two full weeks. That's one of the reasons why we need to, another agenda item, talking about health insurance over the next week or so, to be able to prepare for that, for that process. So um, I, I don't have all of the insurance lines coming to you. We're focusing on health insurance, but just uh anecdotally, the dental uh disability and life insurance are all coming in with the same vendor, it's zero percent increases, so those are um same we have before. So once we do the renewal for the health insurance, we'll do all of those and be set to go. But there's no other changes other than a potential discussion.
Say dental or who else?
Uh, disability and life, so short-term, long-term disability and life insurance.
Thank you.
Yep, and then um, I got another letter from D P I this week that said, hey, you have a lot of money in fund balance. So we are continuing to, you know, look, they're basing it on June thirtieth of last year. Nothing changed since then. Uh, but we have, we have bought a few things, but we also continue to have a profitable experience in food service. So we are looking at potentially doing some more extensive things. Um, I did just get some quotes today. Uh, so we're looking at uh equipment replacement, some of the, some equipment that we um held over prior to the referendums. We have a holder oven that were um had been around. We just continue to use them. We're looking at replacing them with new hybrid ovens that do both uh cooking and steaming. Um, so we've got, we just have a quote now for replace four of them throughout the district, and that's at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah, we have a over a billion dollars still sitting in fund balance. And then one of the thoughts was uh looking at the North Commons uh surgery. Uh, it's a little tight from a work, worker standpoint, and so we uh brought in belters um who helped dive the, I don't know if they were there for the twenty twelve referendum, but they did the uh twenty eighteen one where they'd helped design both the elementary school and middle school kitchens. So we're having them just kind of take a look at that and provide some, some suggestions of what we might be able to do. We're not talking about moving walls or anything, but we could move the counter up a little bit to provide more um space behind. We're also looking at replacing some of the items because now that we have a pod, we don't necessarily need the, the sliding um delivery things for sandwiches and that. We do that at the pod area. So they're looking at potentially other things that might allow us to do custom sandwiches and some other venue enhancements um starting next year. So uh, Airmark will be here at the June, uh, the second Tuesday in June meeting uh to do their annual report, and hopefully by that point, we may have some additional information here as to what we um, I think there's nothing definitive on that, but we are gonna take a look at it because it's the one kitchen that wasn't touched in the last referendum. And um, we can ask, you know, D P I wants to spend the money, so we're looking at. We think everything, so.
I'd say like, it's a little hanging fruit for that one, so.
Ms. Peterson, I was just wondering how long, um, is there a limit or time frame that we have to spend these excessive funds?
Um, they'll just continue to uh hound me uh on an annual basis. They do, they want you to have no more than two to three months of operating expenses in there, and we will exceed that. So um, you know, as I, as I told them, we just went through two referendums when this all started. And so, you know, I'm limited and just, I don't want to just get kitchens again, just to do it. So we are a little bit more limited, but we are, you know, we're trying to transfer utility closets, or we did buy the van last year. We are replacing other equipment. So we're making a concerted effort. Um, but we still, again, continue to um have a profit every month. So I'm trying to get to a point where we can spend more money, either through um staffing or through um um quality of food to help bring our monthly income down, to help us really draw it down. Because even though we spend, we can spend a lot of money, but if we continue to make a lot of money, then it's gonna end up being, you know, we're gonna be net even.
And there's not any time where they could potentially ask funds back?
I, I haven't heard that yet. They do, I have to, um, I remember last year I had to, I had to do a plan to um say how we were gonna start spending down. They're asking for another one. I have to present that report in June, otherwise they'll stop providing us reversements, but I'll oh, sure. So I'll have some of these items of potential larger um um remodeling expenses included that as a potential spend out.
Very great. Thank you so much.
I'm sure the students wouldn't mind if we got some designer chicken nuggets.
It's worth on the shelf.
So that, uh, so again, Airmark will be here on the thirteenth to, to give a full presentation. You can ask questions. Um, any other questions on the business update? Otherwise, that's all I have.
I mean, don't fight, because you could get Chick-fil-A. They used to do it at my old job, like every Wednesday, you could go to the cafeteria, get Chick-fil-A. Very good point. I mean, we can get some action. And then smiles. Hey, I'm just saying. She said better quality.
Alright, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Fleming. Uh, up next is approval of new hire.
We have no new hires.
Alright, very good. Uh, next approval, resignations.
We do have one resignation, um Elizabeth Anzia as a high school English teacher. That'll be effective the last day of school.
Okay, um, can we get a motion for approval of that resignation?
Well, I, I'd like to um make a motion, if I could, to approve the resignation of Elizabeth Anzia as a high school English teacher effective June eighth. As a high school English teacher effective June eighth, twenty twenty.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Peterson, a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Macon. Any?
This was her second year.
Any other discussion?
Did she send up a letter? Yeah. It didn't compete with her other offer, I'm sure.
Alright, um, so we'll take the vote now, all in favor? With I?
I.
Alright, so as have it, the vote carries six to zero. Alright, up next is the approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for. Yeah, all of that.
So, uh, once again, uh, this is, um, uh, because of our situation with our, uh, increase in equalization aid every year and, uh. Uh, our tax levy, uh, the board decided, um, for the last two years, last three years, actually, to over levy to. Um, pay down some future debt to help reduce our long term interest costs and reduce our fund thirty nine or our referendum debt. Uh, levy, so, um, again, this year we over levy by a one million dollars, and this is just the official approval of the process. Um, to where we officially defees the funds where it goes into a, an escrow account with the bank, and then it, um, is waiting to pay down the debt when it's callable, which is not immediately. Uh, but we are looking at, um, some of our last debt that would be owed, uh, which has the highest interest rate. And so we're looking for the most, most bang for buck, so other than, um, a small amount of, uh, fees for both legal and processing, um, costs for, um, getting the process done through Baird. Uh, most of the money of a million dollars is going to actually defees, um, and eliminate future debt, so, um, again, this is something we did last year. Um, same amount of money, I do have, um, Lisa Voison and Kevin Mullen behind me from Robert W. Baird, who were generous enough to stop by in case there were any. Questions, uh, related to deficiencies, I don't know if they have anything to add or.
You explained it perfectly, right?
Well, we're doing it enough that I'm getting back, so.
Say the savings this year added to the savings last year is over a million dollars in interest comp saving to tax fares. It's direct reduction of your debt levy for tax fares for the future, I think that's good for the board to know.
Absolutely. As as it is moved into, um, this escrow account. Um, does this million dollars garner any type of interest, or does it gain any type of dollars at all itself?
Yes, um, so that money is invested in, um, securities that are called state and local government securities, in acronym the slugs. Um, and that rate is set by the federal government, and you're earning the maximum amount that the federal government allows you to earn in that, uh, account. Um, so I think it's about three point four percent, um, until the call date, and so, yes, the answer to your question is it will earn interest between now and then.
So rather than sitting with us as we're waiting to pay off that debt, we're also garnering additional dollars on those funds while we await to pay off.
Yeah, it's a great, great question, that's reflected in the savings. The other real nice benefit of this, in addition to reducing the debt services, that escrow, the debt, that portion of the debt that you're defusing. Becomes the responsibility of the escrow, and so it's no longer your debt service, it really is off your books, and so. It reduces your debt burden directing, uh, and brings debt limit right back to you, so.
I just have a question, and this is just because it's, um, I don't know, the answer to this, I don't know what a call date is. Um, and so the call date, I'm assuming is the day in which we can, we have to, um, pay down that, 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 is that?
Uh, you have, so when the bonds were sold in two thousand eighteen, um, investors bought those bonds, and, um, when they bought the bonds, they. You know, gave you a really low interest rate, but they wanted some expectation that that bond would stay outstanding for a certain period of time. And so there was an optional call, um, and I think on this one, it was an eight year call, you know, a nine year call, and so in nine years, you. Uh, and the board has the, um. Flexibility to decide to repay it if you want, so it doesn't have to be prepaid, you're saying right now, you're gonna put this money in the escrow. And then in eight years, you're going to, the escrow is gonna call those bonds, so.
I say call date, I say call date, it's a prepayment date, when can you prepay? A mortgage, you can pay off right away, there's no prepayment date in the future, you pay off your mortgage, if you refinance at a low rate, in this case, we have to wait.
We do have other debts that we have that we could have prepaid, but they were at a lower interest rate, and so the savings, again, because it disappears immediately, it's, though we we paid it off. And so the savings is more significant by taking some of these debts that are farther in the future. But I did, I did actually just received a, a letter today that we, um, did pay off our two thousand twelve.
Looking at.
Um, uh, our, uh, bond that we had, um, from twenty twelve, that actually we made our last payments, uh, in March, so that, that is off. So when I do my budget and you see the debt schedule, you're gonna see two less debts than what we had, and we also paid off our, our state trust.
Yep.
Okay.
So both of those are gone, and and that bottom loan of this, of this portion of the fifteen million, um, will be a million dollars lower.
Great story. That is great, that's awesome.
Alright. And of course, we love those, that savings measure.
The other thing that's worth noting, sorry, but in addition to that, you were able to do that, and still your tax levy and your tax rate went down last year. Which, you know, like, it's a great strategic decision.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, it's interesting, it makes you wonder, you know, if that's possible, you would think more people would do it.
Well, you know, it's, again, it's part of our story where we've, we've seen this, you know, we haven't seen the same property valuation change that other districts have, so we're, we're seeing a, a large increase in the equalization aid every year, so. It's forcing our property taxes down, so we could have just, you know, given all that money back, but this is a way for us to kind of stabilize the levy. Provide additional money to, again, pay down some of that debt that we have outstanding, and, and, um, that will help us. You know, just being able to reduce the fund thirty nine levy next year by these last two deficiencies, provides a little bit more cushion. Um, if the state provides us with revenue limit increases that could potentially lead to higher taxes, so some of that would get absorbed by either the full million dollar deficiencies and also these. This interest saving increasing, so we have a possibility of having more revenue but not having to raise taxes because of, so.
Very good.
Need to write that up and put it somewhere, where it's on my, um, the, um, webpage somewhere. Right, blast.
Deficiencies are not a very, you know, yeah, it's not the, you know, most exciting one, so.
I never say that word, I just say dead pay off.
We are paying down debt.
Right, early. That pay off early to the tune of a million dollars, that would be.
But in the last three years, well, because we didn't do it two years ago, but we did two million dollars between, um, last year and this year, so.
Yeah.
Certainly may be something to consider to bring up at the bench, maybe.
Right, yeah, sure.
Right, you might have a. That you should have some. Sure.
It's, I mean, we're, we're fortunate, we're, we're, it's, I can't say I'm taking any credit for those that are helping execute it, but it, it, it really is a situation that we're in, so we're just taking advantage of it. It could be a time where equalization starts to fall and taxes have to rise, or different scenarios.
Which is why we want to tell the story.
Let's get the cheerleaders out now.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, paperwork, you see the, the packet in there, uh, I will need signatures from both the, uh, treasurer and clerk this evening, and then Dr. Beetle will be signing. As president, uh, next Tuesday when he returns to town, and then I'll get it down to the, um, to Quarles, who's handling the, their bond council.
Sounds good. And thank you for coming.
Thanks, Lisa, thanks, Gavin.
Thanks so much, thank you.
Alright, so I'd like to get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to. And the deficiencies of certain of the general obligation school building and investment bonds stated July tenth, two thousand eighteen as presented.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Ms. Walker and Ms. Macon for that motion, a second, any further discussion? Alright, are those in favor?
Oh, I, I apologize, would you mind doing a, we do avoid, uh, I'll load on this, I do have to list by name.
Beetle? Daniels, Ashley, I, Macon?
I.
Peterson?
I.
Robinson?
I.
Smith?
I.
And Walker?
I.
And the vote carries six to zero. Alright, very good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next is approval of the twenty three, twenty five auditor contract.
Yes, um, so as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, uh, we were notified back in the end of March that, um. Riley Penner Benton, our audit firm, was not able to service us this year due to staffing issues, um, my executive summary kind of lays out how it was what we did in the RFP. We did have three firms, uh, respond with, uh, offers and, and proposals, which I included, I didn't include all the proposals, I just include the one that was the, what we thought was the winner. Uh, but I did include a matrix, uh, online that kind of showed you, uh, because part of the RFP, it's a scoring system that we went through. And so just kind of discussing the, um, uh, the three, the three terms, and in my summary, I did mention that the reason why, um, we. We, uh, as administration is recommending, um, working with, uh, Schumacher Sama, um, is because number one is that, uh, their cost for auditing services is comparable and actually slightly less right now. Than what we've been currently paying through, uh, Riley Penner and Ben, the other two firms were sixty percent more expensive, uh, than our current costs, so we thought that was important. We also felt that working with a smaller firm, um, could provide a better level of support to the district compared to one of the larger public accounting firms in the US, because both. Um, they're totally with leer in the top fifteen, you know, in the country with thousands and thousands of, um, associates. And then, um, also Schumacher Sama has had a long, has had long term engagements with a number of various districts, including, um, area districts like Maple Dale, Indian Hill, Glendale River Hills, Nicolay and Whitefish Bay, those are all over ten plus years. Um, they also, uh, have been with Kellam Rain for over thirty years, working with them. And I have colleagues, obviously, in all these districts, I work with them on a regular basis, and they all have very positive takes to say, so, um, um. We thought, and I reviewed this both, uh, myself and Kathy Kelsner are, are come, reviewed it, I did, I have a, I have a, um. Um, Zoom meeting with, um, Mike Sama, who with the, we see, uh, one partner, Schumacher Sama, to discuss a few things, and I felt really comfortable, um. You know, talking to him, and then, uh, Ms. Peterson and I had a, like, conversation on the phone on Friday, just kind of reviewed with her the same things that I'm sharing with you, just to get her insight as well, to see how, how she felt, and. Um, based on the information I shared, I think she concurred as well, so that is why we are recommending that the board approve, uh, Schumacher Sama as our, uh, district auditor for the next three this week.
Alright, any questions for Ms. Fleming on this?
I had a question, but just, um, just a statement, just thanking you for doing the vetting process and going with. Um, and audit services that is make them, uh, I appreciated the fact that you put together, um, this nice little, um, matrix, um, which allowed me to kind of see. You know, the comparisons, and so, um, thank you.
I mean, it was, the RFP is a template from DPI, so they actually have all those scoring, you know, rubrics in there. Um, it is a little hard to judge sometime, you know, as I was going through the process, like. Uh, what do I judge the size of the firm on, and so, you know, and as, as, um, Ms. Peterson and I were talking about the difference between the services of a large firm versus a small firm, we kind of. In that discussion, kind of lead more toward the small firm, I kind of gave them a little more, but I mean, they're all, they're all great firms, they all work in a number of districts, um, you know, that's, that's, the nice part is that DPI vets all of the, all of the firms on their list, so. Um, you know, you know you're getting good audit firms that are qualified to do, um, full auditing, uh, when you go to that list, so it's just a matter of being able to find one, and I, and I'm, I'm happy that actually we had three great firms that. Were willing to, um, put a bid in for us for work this late in the process, because had we been, had we wanted to do this purposefully, I would have done this in January, and we would have had this process going, because. Um, as I said, I think when I got the email from Riley Penner, I was assuming it was telling me what dates they were coming for the. Uh, because that's the time we would be doing all of that, we'd be planning on that, so we're a little behind the baseball, but I think we're, we're, we're good in talking to Schumacher Sama, we'll. We, we have a kind of a plan as to how we can complete the audit in a timely fashion, um, we'll probably go a little later into August to give us more time to help, um, make sure we have everything ready to go, but they seem, um. Um, excited to, to potentially work with us, so.
And they're located where?
And no staffing concerns from them, then. Any other questions? Alright, um, I'd like to get a motion on this item.
Um, Robinson, I'd like to motion to approve the selection of Schumacher Sama. Sama as the district's audit firm for the twenty twenty three, the twenty twenty four, and the twenty twenty five fiscal years. I second that motion.
Great, thank you, Ms. Macon, and, uh, Ms. Daniels, Ashley, for the second. Any further discussion?
I will just point out, Dr. Beetle is back, um.
Hello.
Alright.
I don't know if you heard anything, if he feels qualified to vote or wants to stand on this one.
Yeah, I actually read through it, so I'm fine.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, eyes have it, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, next to discussion and approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty four health insurance vendor and rates.
Been a fun week, um, so, uh, so, and I don't even, you know, when you find a lot of hers and you find a, one percent increase. Uh, so it's been, it's been a little hectic, but, um, so I, I want everything for you to prove aside, but I wanted to share with you the latest, uh, information that we had, I had a meeting with NIS, I talked, yesterday, I talked to them today. Um, and just trying to share with you what I think, um, I'd like to present as two potential options, I'd like to get board feedback on that. And then I have a seating scheduled for Thursday with our insurance committee, both that to, um, share as well, and just kind of, kind of gauge where people, um, uh, heads are at, so. Uh, if I can, can I share my screen at this point?
Absolutely. To make you a co-host here.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm good, I think I'm, I think I'm, I'm gonna share. My screen, so I've got a couple of different, um, spreadsheets that I shared with you.
Yeah, put the plus sign.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll scroll over as needed, so. So, the, uh, I, I sent you a couple of different sheets, um, showing you the differences between the, um, um. So we currently have the Wisconsin Counties Association Group Health Trust, and that's this blue column, um, uh, the first column, which shows you, we currently have two plans. Um, we're just gonna focus on the main plan, which is the five hundred thousand dollar deductible for singles and a thousand dollar deductible for families. Um, we are, uh, we do have a, a separate plan, what we, what we call our option two, our buy it plan. But the district contribution is fixed plan one, and so the, the staff who decide to go into plan two pay the difference. I believe that what's gonna happen with the cost increase of this plan is that that plan will die, because I don't know that anyone will find that that is cost effective anymore when they absorb the full increase, if that's where you end up going, but. Um, if, if we stay with WCA, that will be a possibility that we would look at still extending. So along the bottom of this, I do show you that these are three proposed plans that WCA provided us, and along the bottom, it shows you what the, uh. Estimated net increase to the district would be this year, and so, um, right now, we are currently paying eighty seven point four percent of the total health insurance premium as a district. I'm not gonna recommend making an adjustment to that portion that we do, uh, because in an analysis with our neighbors, we're, we're pretty in line, there are a few that have gone to. Twelve point five, um, there's, there's one that went to fifteen eighty five, but I, I don't know that it makes, I don't think it would make a significant difference at this point, I think we have to look at a different. Um, potential shift, so I'm not gonna recommend that, so the, the totals you're seeing right now, um, right here, you're seeing that it's five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a nineteen percent increase. Um, but our district cost, based on our current enrollment, which can obviously change, we can have, you know, people jump from single to family, or people cover go off the insurance. But that net increase for us is about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so almost a half million dollars to just absorb the nineteen percent increase as is. As plans go, five hundred dollars, thousand dollar deductibles are relatively low and unheard of, uh, in most sectors this day, these days. So one option we should look at would be, uh, doubling it and going to this proposed plan one, which would be a one thousand, two thousand, um, that takes ours, um, increase down to sixteen point five percent. And then reduces the total cost of the district to four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, so it saves us about, um, seventy thousand, about sixty thousand, thousand dollars to go that route. So that's one option, then, uh, they did provide us two other plans to, again. Then, uh, they did provide us two other plans to, again, double it and then take us to a high deductible amount. The issue becomes, at a certain point, the deductibles get pretty high compared to our neighbors. We have a lot of districts that have gone to the high, uh, the high deductible plan, but they always include some kind of, uh, HRA or HSA reimbursement that comes back. And so, you can see on the bottom here, there is savings just in the plan in itself. So, for example, the two thousand, four thousand, our increase goes up to only three hundred and forty-five thousand, I mean, I'm like, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of money. Um, but that would be what our increase would be, cause it'd be thirteen point four percent. But if you were to add on, say, a one thousand or two thousand dollar HRA or HSA to help pay for half of the deductible, that's an additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which takes your total cost to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars increase. So now we're tied with numbers that are above, you know, just sticking with the plan that we have. Uh, and then going to the high deductible plan, the, the reduction was so small, it was actually less than one percent, uh, point seven percent. And so the savings, again, was negligible, put in the HRA, I mean, it was, it was a lot of extra money. So, um, for my thoughts, um, I would say the only viable plan that we see through WCA would potentially be Plan One, which would include, um, just doubling the deductible, but not increasing a contribution on our behalf, um, to the staff, through an HRA or HSA. So that's one potential option. Then, um, so we did, I'll just mention, so we did, um, also put out the bid. We are in a rather challenging competitive marketplace this year because we've lost two players in the group health market. WEA Trust went out of business last fall and a number of districts had to shift suddenly, um, as, as the school year started. Um, and then Humana announced back in February, I believe, that they are getting out of the group health business. So even some of those schools that went from WEA to Humana, it'll be switching again either this year or next year. Cause, uh, Humana is not taking on any new clients, but they're gonna offer, I think, through the end of twenty-twenty-four, they're gonna cover. So that leaves us, um, for, for competitive bids, really only Anthem, Blue Shield as a potential suitor. And they, um, were, they were not interested in bidding based on our utilization from this past year. The, the issue we have with WCA is because the, uh, that, that company is serviced by United Healthcare, so we use UMR, that's the portal we use and everything. UMR will not bid separately to, uh, against WCA. So until we get out of WCA, we will never have an opportunity to have UMR, uh, bid for, for our work. So, so we did put out the bids, we didn't have a lot of options, uh, Blue Cross, uh, Anthem did, did not, uh, elect to, to, uh, to offer. But we did get one, uh, proposal from Network Health. So Network Health is a little more limited network in our area, um, it is, uh, used by Shortwood. So we're not, we're not the only school district, but it is super common. Uh, one of the disadvantages of Network Health is that they are, they do not offer, um, in-network, they do not have in-network agreements with, um, Advocate Aurora or Pro Healthcare. So, you know, making a switch to that would be a disruption of service for some of our staff. I mean, anytime you change carriers, there can be some disruptions, but that's obviously potentially a bigger one. But there are some other advantages to potentially talking about, about, um, Network Health. So they gave us a whole slew of plans. You saw in the spreadsheet I shared with you, I only shared you the last five, cause the first five were basically duplicates of where we were, but the costs were astronomically more. So I'm only looking at things that could actually potentially save us money or change the way we do, we, we do, um, healthcare business. So, um, really, I wanna focus on the last two columns here, where we have, um, proposed Plan Nine and proposed, oh, Plan Ten. These are, um, these are high deductible plans, so that they're, um, they're in official Affordable Care Act designated high deductible plan. So they have a three thousand, six thousand deductible, um, they are one hundred percent coinsurance and the out-of-pocket maximum hits when you hit the deductible. So basically, there's no additional cost involved. Right now, we're under a ninety percent coinsurance, so that there is that part that once you're deductible, you pay a certain percentage until you hit that out-of-pocket max. So we get to a point where, um, um, it can be less expensive. With the three thousand, six thousand, the premium costs are, in, in the case of, there's two plans. So there's this POS plan, which is, um, option nine, which basically does have a network and out-of-network owned into it. So it does have a, um, your in-network coverage is a three thousand, six thousand, out-of-network is four thousand, eight thousand. It allows you to have, um, some, uh, connection to one of those, uh, you know, health networks that we talked about, that we don't have access to right now. And we would then, like other districts, we would backfill some of the costs with an HRA. So as an example here, on this plan, on the POS plan, um, the actual increase for the district overall is, uh, twenty thousand dollars, so it's less than a percent. But if we did a situation where we took the in-network deductibles of three thousand, six thousand, cut them in half and provided either fifteen hundred for singles or three thousand dollars for, um, for families, that would be a total cost of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So in total, this would be a four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar cost. Now, the, the theory behind using these plans is that it provides, you know, it's a way of kind of shifting the mindset and it actually allows us to provide more money to, uh, the staff members themselves instead of the insurance company. Whereas with WCA, you are paying automatically one hundred percent, doesn't matter if you're using it or not, you're gonna pay more premiums. You're gonna pay sixteen percent or whatever it is to do. Here are premium costs in the, in Plan Nine are about the same as what we're currently paying. And we're gonna provide our staff with, and again, these are just theoretical numbers, I haven't definitively decided on an amount yet. That would be a discussion we'd have if we go this route. But if you, if you create HRA or HSA plans, I don't know if anybody has familiarity with them in your own, um, work, but those are plans that we, we, we provide money into the plan and then the plan can be used. Uh, the money that's in there can either sit there and roll over and from year to year. And if they don't use it, it's theirs, they can take it with them when they leave the district. Um, HRAs are something that can be used for the future for, um, paying premium costs in retirement, something like that. HSAs are tied to more of, of reimbursing actual expenses that you would have. So we can discuss what that vehicle could look like, but we'd be providing money to our staff so that, for our staff who don't utilize health insurance, this is, this could potentially be a win for them. Um, if you're a heavy utilizer, then yeah, it's not, if, there, there is an out-of-pocket piece, which, which, but if you're network, it's not that much farther off of what we might be increasing to anyway, considering these extra, you know, monies we could be doing. Uh, the other side of this is that they also offer, which is Plan Ten, which is their HMO plan. So we have the PPO plan, which would allow you to have in-network and out-of-network costs if you're concerned about having access to out-of-network providers. But if you're someone as a family who, who goes freighter or goes to, maybe St. Mary's or goes to community health or Wheaton or some of those that are in the plan, and that's exclusively where you go, um, you may decide, I want the HMO plan, which doesn't provide any support for out-of-network, but the premiums are even lower. And we could, you know, potentially, so the savings, actually, it's a ten percent savings from where we are right now. And we could then provide an even larger HSA or HRA that could motivate folks to, to go to that plan, if that's something that works for them. Obviously, again, if you're dealing with the disruption of, of, of which network you're going, or which health network you're part of, or which, when you use doctors more often, you know, you'd have to look at those, at, at which option would be best for you. But, um, it would be a way of kind of shifting the mindset, cause I do believe, we don't do it this year, at some point in the next year or so, we're gonna end up having to move to this kind of a plan. And a lot of districts have done that. Ideally, it would be with a plan that, you know, we might, we wouldn't have this, uh, potential disruption in coverage. But this is, you know, we're facing a pretty extensive increase right now. So, um, so, so what I'm looking at here, and what I've done is I actually created a new graphic here, which kind of shows that these really are the two things that I am thinking, um, that we would look at, cause unless you, unless the board has another suggestion of something they saw, uh, you know, I don't wanna increase costs even more than where we were. Um, but I'm looking at ways we can reduce costs and/or shift some more money to our staff as opposed to having it just go into premium.
I have a question. Okay, um, you say that the, um, the claims experience is great. Are there certain things that there, it's a lot of heart attacks, a lot of accidents, a lot of, what, what is the, um, general consensus on that?
Um, without getting too specific, um, there, we just had, we had a really, really bad claim year with some very specific things going on that could be recurring. So that's part of why I think the insurance company is a little hesitant. And, you know, sometimes, we had three really good years of utilization and we ended up with three zero percent increases. Um, I, I am disappointed that WCA isn't, um, being more forgiving, you know, and I, I did offer, I did ask them if they wanted to do a multi-year deal to, you know, we commit to two or three years and then maybe spread out the increase and give them a guaranteed increase, they weren't interested in that. Um, so really there, and, and I think part of it may be, I, I can't speak for them officially, but, um, I mean, they, they're, they recognize where the marketplace is right now and, you know, we, we don't have a ton of options, so, um, it's just.
But do we still have supplemental insurance? Like one time we had a supplemental insurance company that was out of state.
We don't have some, we don't offer supplemental insurance ourselves, uh, we just have our, the, the one health plan. So, but the WCA network is very extensive, I mean, it's basically statewide, other than Dean Health, I think everything else in the state is covered, because that's a, an organization that uses all, um, or has, is accessed by municipalities and counties across the state of Wisconsin. So that's, it's a very extensive network, it's very wide, um. Now, will Network Health, because they're, and again, I'm not speaking for them, I can't promise this, but, you know, will Network Health recognize the fact that they're one of the few competitors left? Will they decide to be more aggressive in trying to acquire agreements with some of these companies, so they're more attractive? I, I don't know. I did have a conversation with, um, the business manager in Shorewood, uh, who arrived just, uh, after they switched to, to Network Health, but she said they don't really seem to have a lot of complaints, you know, there. Now, they are, you know, in Shorewood, they do have, uh, you know, Columbia, uh, St. Mary's is pretty big. Um, we obviously have, uh, Columbia St. Mary's Hospital in McQuan, as well as Freiter has expanded their presence with a couple of clinics and things over there. So, you know, I don't know, I, I wanna gauge, you know, staff input a little bit to see where, what they think. But I just, I wanted to see, like, your, your opinions. Really, I'm looking at one of these two things where we would either, I think, um, go with the WCA, but go at a higher deductible rate to save us a little bit of money, uh, or potentially propose a dual plan where, uh, we would offer, we would switch to Network Health and offer this high deductible plan with an HRA or HSA.
Kevin, uh, quick.
Yep.
Comment, uh, in relationship to this. Okay, and looking at this or whatever, we know it's gonna cost the district, it's gonna actually end up costing, uh, our staff. I, I think one of the things potentially that we may need to look at is this. If we end up paying the higher insurance part, right, and the district ends up paying that, could we let them, let staff know, like, we're, we're taking on this extra cost in relationship to the insurance? But then, you know, they may not be able to get the three percent increase for for salary or whatever have you, because we've gotta make some type of concession in relationship to that. Have you looked at something like that or whatever? Because I know that we talked about before CPI was gonna be some crazy number. This year, we, we did, um, three point five or whatever. So would it, would it be advantageous for us to be potentially talk to them about that, being like, hey, you know what? This is, this is what's going on, this is what it's gonna cost the district. But again, what we wanna be able to try to do is we wanna be able to keep your, 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 your insurance lower and everything else like that, so you can have more of your money. But again, we've gotta find someplace to take, so maybe you can't get the four percent increase or the three percent, and maybe it might be a two percent increase or whatever have you. Have you looked at, have you looked at the numbers like that from that standpoint as well too? Especially since we know we've got to, uh, run this, we, we, well, we don't have to, but we, it'd be more, it'd be better for us to run it past the staff and be like, what do you, actually, what do you think? Or the, uh, the, uh, or their, uh, representatives.
Right, well, I, I, I'll just remind you though, that their bargaining power is only on base wages, so I don't know that they, they're right to just argue base wages and not take any other compensation into consideration. That's certainly something the board can argue, but they don't have to acknowledge that or not, so that's up to them.
I know that they don't have to acknowledge it, but I'm saying, Kev, is they don't have to acknowledge it. But we, we, if we turn around and we tell them like, hey, this is, this is what's going on, or whatever, you know, regardless, I mean, it's gonna be ugly, it's gonna be our decision on what happens, but for them to understand, you know, this is kind of where we are with this thing or whatever, and we're looking out, we, we wanna be able to look out for you because we want more money in your pocket, as all, as, as well as you being able to have that, that great benefit for the insurance without going broke. But, you know, the money's gotta come from somewhere, so would you be willing to compromise?
It, it could certainly be a discussion, I mean, again, it's not technically negotiating, it's, you know, having a parent, but I, I, it, it really, it does come into the board and then in closed session night, we're gonna talk about a potential strategy for that. But this all, you know, is part of that, is part of that conversation, but I don't know. Uh, you know, I don't know what they'll react to, I didn't know how the board would react to the numbers we're talking about. Obviously, you know, we, we discussed the fact that in my initial projection, just based on, um, enrollment, that we're looking at about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue that we will have, you know, just from that bad year falling off the revenue limit worksheet. So, I, I was hoping that could be, a lot of it could be used for salaries, but obviously, a good chunk of it's gonna end up paying for this, whatever form we decide to do. So, um, and then that salary conversation can follow as well. So that's a, it's certainly a board discussion we can have to decide, you know, how you wanna present that. Um, I don't know, you know, again, so, some people are focused on salaries and some people are focused on benefits, it depends where you are, so.
And I'd like to just go on record by saying, from a retention perspective, that drives me pause. If, if we're talking about.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
From a retention perspective, that would bring me pause, um, because of the competition around us. Uh, one could argue, or one could suggest, that if I can't get it here, then I have, you know, District A, B, C, and D that can go to, um, and, you know, have them meet my needs from a salary perspective and potentially, um, health insurance perspective as well. So I, I just want to lay that out there.
I, I have, um, Lisa, you can go. I was gonna follow that same thing about teacher retention. I think anytime you talk about switching, um, carriers and having different providers is huge. And people like their doctor, they have kids, they like their pre-nutrition, and that is a huge portion to ask them to change. So I think anything that involves that is gonna drastically go against teacher retention.
It's potential, I mean, I, I, I come from, you know, again, e- everybody has different experience. In the private sector, I worked for a small company and it seemed like every year we were switching from one company to the next, that they're always looking for whatever, you know, had the lowest increase. And so there were years where, oh, you can't do this, you can't do that. I mean, it's, I'm not saying that that's the direction we have to go to, it is the reality for a lot of people, uh, in different industries, not necessarily education. Um, but, you know, like you said, other districts are, you know, going through the issues now and Humana goes away and there's only UHC and, you know, Blue Cross and, you know, are the only two full-service, you know, um, help, they want to see what happens. Cause it may be other, other districts that are like, oh, you know, gonna see similar sort of situations, so. Uh, but I just, I, these are the two things that I see as potentials. I don't know that I have a favorite at this point, but I just at least wanted to see where board's position was, but I appreciate that, that, you know, that is gonna be an issue, we, we'll switch with this, this route.
There is a, um, all of this is all intertwined and to Lisa's point, not that I have the concern about teachers leaving as a result of us changing providers, but just the idea if we truly look at our, our staffing, if we're talking about a large number of claims in previous years, which has indeed been a major cause for our increase. Um, if we're changing providers, these people that have these reoccurring issues, will that pose a problem for them in an environment trying to find potentially new doctors and things of that nature? That's the first thing. The second thing is, if we do have staffing that have or has a whole lot of claims because of whatever their ailments are, I don't know if that's going to change. We may have a year where we find some type of, um, not as high of an increase. But if that's our, if that's who we are, unfortunately, we're going to again see that increase again next year, whoever we're with. Because that's where most health insurance organizations determine whether or not they're going to be increasing based on how much they're paying out in claims each year. And so that is my other concern. And, and my third point that I wanted to make is, as Dr. Beetle talked about, um, impacting salaries in some type of way, I don't know if that would necessarily be the route, but I'm thinking that unfortunately, we may need to look at this premium, um, division. The eighty-seven point four that we're paying in comparison to them then paying, what is that, fifteen point six? Am I, what's my calculation? Twelve point six that they're paying out, maybe it could turn into an eighty-five, fifteen split, where they then incur a few more, uh, the additional premium dollars to help offset, um, this larger change that we would have. And then my final point would be that I would be in agreement, um, to increase the deductibles also to get this down. And so with all of that said, I probably would offer to stay with WCA plan. And so with all of that said, I probably would offer to stay with WCA Plan A. With the increase in the deductibles, but then also increasing that split between the premium. Between the school, the school district and the staff.
I do have, I didn't, I, I didn't share it, I'm not gonna share it here, because I don't wanna give away anybody else's party, but I did share with you the North Shore. Um, it's on, it's on board docs where, um, showing you where the North Shore is at, and there are several districts that are also in the same boat we are, where they're. Maybe making changes, so it does show you kind of where we are, um, compared and. The twelve point six is pretty standard, I think it was like one district that's higher, and they're also on a high deductible plan, kind of, so I think so. Again, I think just looking at that and actually looking at the, uh, I did include in that all of the actual premium costs on a monthly basis, so you can see. You know, how we compare, because even, you know, there are districts that are, um, at the five hundred, one thousand dollar level. A hundred percent co-insurance, but their premium costs are two hundred dollars more than what we're paying. The, the problem is, I don't know that staff pay that close attention to it, I don't, I think. The, the real struggle is that when you're, when you're hiring someone. It's all about salary, what's my salary gonna be, and then the benefits come as an afterthought, and then we. We share, well, well, here's our carrier, here's our this, here's our that, and that's where, you know, I mean, sometimes that can make or break. Uh, a situation, but it's very rare, it's like they kind of say, well, I'm already committed with salary piece, that's the most important thing. Obviously, if you're in a specific health situation where maybe you're seeing a doctor, maybe then it is a, a bigger issue for you, and you maybe make that. Part of the process when you, you know, when you pick a job, I just, we haven't seen that a lot so far, obviously, some of our staff are younger, they're, you know, they're. Relatively new to the education system, some of them were on their parents', you know, insurance until recently, so. It hasn't been top of mind for them, they don't have families yet, so. You know, we're just trying to figure out, we, we want to obviously encourage good consumerism, because in the end, if we continue to have. Folks who just, you know, joined the district and just want to utilize the health insurance, then it will end up costing all of us, and our retirees, you know, everyone. Um, considerably more money to, to support that, so we're just trying to figure out what best charges, so.
One more question for, um, edification of all, you and I, we met on this as well. We've been talking about it, but the HRA, um, the estimates that you have on here. Are those estimates based on giving every staff person something? Or are those estimates based on what you and I had talked about when I indicated that. Um, when you met your deductible, we then could offer something to our employee. So which one are your estimates?
This is based on op, and this is what the standard practice is, and offering it to everyone. Uh, what we did, I did, I did bring up that conversation that you had with NIS, and one of the things that was mentioned was that, um. By doing it to everybody, you, you are incentivizing, like, they get it. Regardless if they use it or not, if you, if you put in a situation where the money is provided to you when you use it, then you are also encouraging. Utilization to some extent, so that was one of the things that, that was brought up, and so, I mean, I'm open to what that could look like, but I do understand the point of if. If, if a teacher or staff member knows that I get fifty hundred dollars every year added to this HRA, if I'm here for twenty years. You know, that can invest and, and turn into something that maybe buys me a year or two of, you know, of insurance potentially when I retire. Um, and, or if I don't use it that much, or it may be that I have the money in this account, so that if I do have. Out of surgery that I need to do, I can pay for deductible for a year to have that money, you know, access to it, so, um. Uh, there, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do, and again, part of it is trying to drive that you, it, it, the help makes.
Yeah, this is a really, yeah, it's a tough time for us to have to deal with this, because I, I've. Worked for companies for, last couple companies I've worked for that have really had the plan. And so I'm just thinking of going from a five hundred to a fifteen hundred. Would be like.
What you, with ours is like ten thousands.
Five, ten, yeah, that, that's the next step.
Well, ten, yes, ten is the family, five is the single.
Okay, that's a high number, these are small numbers.
Yeah, I mean, that, I was also brought up, um, but, but I was told like, that's the last switch we have right now, so we don't. I, we wouldn't want to necessarily pull that right now, but that could be something. Go to the high deductible plan at some point, that's your next big increase kind of saving grace, if you have to go to five, but. Nobody in our area is, is doing that, like you said, there are a number of districts that have gone through this.
Cause that's typically one of the parts of working for a school district, I think, is that they have a lot. Better insurance company, so. That, that would, that's, it's a tough time for us to have to deal with that, particularly with where salaries are. Increasing and all that stuff right now, it's the CPI, so.
I did, and I did also share with you, I'm not gonna put it up on the screen, but I did share with you also on board docs, that's just today, because I wanted to make sure I could do it. Um, I did share with you what's known as disruption report, so it actually, um, you can look at that at your. Leisure, um, it does actually show you how many, the top fifty, um, places we had claims. And what would be in network and what would not be in network, um, so you can kind of look at that as a, as a potential source of information when you look at.
My players and junior providers.
My provider check, yeah, oh, yeah, because there, well, there's some specific, um, locations, some of the, there's multiple Aurora. Locations, but we show you exactly like the top fifty, so some are hospitals, some might be clinics. You know, just showing you where that, where that goes, so. I just, I remember, I, I'm laughing about this, because I remember. When I was on the board in the early teens, and it was like, we had a four percent increase, and we were screaming about it, and we said, we gotta lower it to zero or minus something, you know. And so, um, you know, now we're basically happy when it's, it's another increase, you know, so. Um, and, and the truth is that, again, this is an estimate, so it's also possible that this will, the increase in and of itself, um, may not. May not come to total fruition for our district cost, because, um, some people may look at their own spouses. Plans and may decide to shift when their open enrollment opens up, and so we might see, you know, people jump on in, 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 in July. Whatever we decide to do, but you might see a drop off in, in January, if, if that's when other people have the opportunity to switch, because they figured their other plan could be less expensive. So I, I don't know, we'll, we'll see, again, I don't need a, I don't need a decision tonight, I just wanted to share with you this. Um, I want to share both of these plans to the, with the, uh, insurance community to see what the staff thinks. Um, Kara's on the insurance community, so she just got the preview of, of that as well, so she'll think about it. And, and then I'll report back to you, and then hopefully, uh, next week, we can call a, a special meeting to just. Make a decision and then we can move forward with those in our own class.
I think, um, that they had a very good idea to maybe drop it down to eighty five percent. Looks like, because that, that's, and that seems reasonable. If we can maybe save a little bit there. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm really surprised by that.
Number, but now it's ninety, so.
Yeah, I, I, and, and.
Well, this, again, if you're looking at North Shore comparison, you're gonna see that that's. Max, I mean, so, if you want to be comparable, that's the other thing we gotta kind of look at, is that if somebody, if, if. If you say, well, yeah, we have insurance, but you're paying twenty five percent, you know, if you're doing like a seventy five, I mean, I, I think one of my, at one point, my employer, again, private sector, fifty fifty. That thing, you know, which is not unusual.
I've heard seventy thirty and, and seventy five twenty five.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's part of the balancing act of what that looks like, and so. You know, we could, we can certainly have that, and that's something I'll bring up too, to see like, would you rather be on this plan that's a little more comprehensive? If it meant that we had to kick up your contribution a couple percentage points.
Okay, so certainly I'd be interested in hearing what, um. What your folks have to say.
And I'm also, I'm toying with the idea, I don't think we have any staff, but I'm toying with the idea that, you know, this is a select group of like ten people that have been through this. The process before, but based on their feedback, I might open up a quick Google survey over the weekend, just the. I mean, it, it does, the hard part is that the HSA, HRA thing is a, it's a, you know, there's an education component to it, people don't understand. What it means, um, and again, you have different people at different points in their life, so young people. You know, like I said, just coming off of their parents' a plan. That high deductible, it's only gonna cost me, you know, fifty dollars a month, or just, or great, you know, that's, that's where they want to be. You have a family of four kids, and you know that you have these recurring costs, things like that, that maybe the other plan, you know, seems better, so. We're never, um, we always have, with the, with the population of, of staff we have, we always have. People, different age groups, different needs, and so you're always gonna get conflicting interests in there, but it'd be, that's nice to see what. Where people are at and where they're, you know, adamant about, so.
And that's where I was kind of thinking about an actuarial chart, where you kind of look at how many people are what age, because. Your younger people, for the most part, are gonna be, um, having children and, and pregnancy, and have a high ticket on it. When you have babies, typically in their state, and then you have older people, or you have folks that are getting around forty, fifty, sixty years old. That are in the district, so it would be nice to kind of look at what the range is, you know, and where people are as to. Um, kind of forecast, where you're gonna be in the future.
Problem is that it changes so quickly, so it's hard, it's hard to make the decision on that, because.
So, my experience, I mean, having worked in insurance for many, many years now, most people. They sign up for insurance, they're not really, really sure about it, about how things can be worked out, and then those deductible. The average person does not have two thousand dollars, unfortunately, saved in their banking account. And, you know, definitely not three, four, five, or six, but particularly if they're single, so I do, I mean, I understand, you know. This adding and, and our being good steward of the money, but I'm also thinking about the financial hardship that we can cause. Our teachers, and I'm not, I don't think that that would be a good thing, um, you talked about the HSHRs and the. HSAs and the HRAs, right. However, another option could be supplemental insurance, and you know, I used to work in that, and so. I saw where if people, first of all, if you're seeing that most people are between a certain age. And they're, the likelihood of them, this is a stress induced environment, um, heart attacks, strokes, and those type of things. At least that's an option for supplemental insurance will enable them to be able to have money coming in that can. Kind of hit that for a lower amount versus picking up, um, a deductible. Uh, uh, there are a lot of other options, that's all I'm saying.
And then, I mean, the, the challenge is just, obviously, we have limited financial resources, so, I mean, I, I understand, like, as Dr. Peel says, obviously. From a board standpoint, if we spend X amount on insurance, that's money we're not spending on something else, so. You know, and with the uncertainty we're at right now with, with the budget process. You know, we, we don't, we don't know what we'll, what we're cutting from the state, so I don't know what we can necessarily commit to increases, I don't know, we, you know, we have other things that are going up as well, so. You know, I, I, we have to balance it a little bit, I understand that, you know. It's a hardship, it's also gonna be a hardship for us, when we have to let teachers go, because we don't have the resources to, you know, pay everybody, because we. The insurance costs are so high, so that's just, that is the balancing, I meant, you know, that's, that's the part, that's, that's the joy of the job.
Yeah, I think a, a way that some companies sell those plans is to say, yes, there'll be an increase, but. We're giving you fifteen hundred dollars on a card every year that you can use for expenses.
And it, I mean, and the, the truth is, yes, the deductibles go up, but you're getting some of it back, and so it is, you know. Again, it's that, it's the, the difference between having an automatic premium increase every single month, this is what's gonna happen. Versus the potential I might pay more if I have help needs. And if I don't, I get this money that I can, you know, continue to have grow and carry with me, so again, that's the, that's the piece of.
I think one he, one question about the, um, HSA and HRA, does that add, uh, an additional layer of. You know, word administration, if we were to go down that.
We would hire a plan administrator to do that, I mean, there's, uh, it's, it's a small amount of work, um. What happens is, is, there's actually a company that we're probably gonna be moving our flex account to in a year, and they could easily. Do this, and there's usually, there's usually a maintenance fee of about five dollars a month per person, um, through the HRAs or HSA. Uh, well, the option with, uh, with HSA is, I think you have the option of letting people individually set up their own accounts, different banks and that, but then you're. Having to deal with that, or you, um, pay for it, you pay for one, um, administrator to, to run it, then you're sending the money to one place, they handle. Distributing and all the resources, so. Um, so we will, we would look at that, if that's, if, if people felt like that was the option they wanted to go to, then we have some discussion about. Whether that would be an HRA, HSA, uh, because they're different.
Very good, well, we look forward to.
Any information I get over the weekend, you know, if there's any insight I will share with you, just so that you, I'm gonna give you as much time to help. Um, think about it, and we'll see what kind of reaction we get from the staff, and we, sure. Uh, and I just want to make sure that nobody saw any other, I mean, I'll, I will mention the, the potential, uh. Uh, employee, employer percentage shift, but there wasn't anything else people were kind of looking at to. To, um, as options of how to address the increase.
Add in just the slightly higher deductible, I certainly wouldn't go to a five, ten. Uh, higher de, a higher deductible, I think.
Well, yeah, that one plan goes, doubles it to one thousand dollars, so we did that, or in conjunction with a potential shift, so, okay. Or to come on that way.
Okay, so then let's move on then to discussion of strategic planning committee reports.
Smith and Miss.
I can't work together, can you submit the report? Mine wants to load it up. I have a copy of yours, you want it? Okay, no, I got one. Oh, okay, so I did the first. Four, uh, my report comes from the third floor meeting, out of the five, and no, give me yours. Here you go. Oh, yeah, oh, thank you, okay. Okay, so this was that on March twenty first, um, as you can see, it has the, it outlines what has been. Uh, but just pretty self-explanatory, what I might, what I, I created a summary was. That of the meetings that I went to, it was a training on change. And I thought that we would be training to develop a strategic plan. But I did find value in the, in the training on. Change and assessing your needs as an organization, so, so we did a lot of that, so step one, if you can look down there. Leadership, identifying problems, getting, getting us prepared to this. Determining the KPIs that, um, um, Dr. Brown and her leadership team would do, so we essentially spent. Four, twelve days. And with a diverse group, which I really liked, the group that had, whether they were dragged in or volunteered, I don't know, they seemed happy to be there. The kids especially, so, you know, with the input of a diverse group, stakeholders, we, we learned. How, how change works, how change, how people react to change, how organization reacts to change. And I think a lot of it was so going into knowing that we are, that we need a change, that we want a change. You know, in, in the, in this, um, iteration of the strategic plan. So that we, we would be aware of how people react to change, so that we as an organization would be able to positively avoid some of the pitfalls. That, um, organizations run into when there is change, so wasn't that a, weren't admiring any problems? We were, um, really training how organizational. Entities react to. Making themselves better, the pain that it, that it takes to become better, make the change, that's what I got from that. And then I had pink eye the last day, so I didn't think I was.
Yeah, um, as, um. He mentioned most of the information for everything that we had came out of this book, um. He was such an entertaining, um. He really was able to engage us all, and that's what was really, really nice about being in these sessions, um. Direct communication was really good, um. We did some activities as, as groups, you know, in groups, and, and, and everybody probably had done some of these where they. Put together a bunch of folks and they ask you to problem solve something, and you have a couple of people that try to take. I won't, I won't say try to take, a couple of people that are a little bit more assertive or aggressive. You have some people for a little less assertive or whatever, and so one of the examples that was kind of interesting is. We were going to have a party where we invited kids over, and they were going to make PBJs, you know, PBJs, so. What is involved in having a party for kids? And you have P, PBJs, and it's just amazing how you can break that down so much, and how. How much information can be gathered from just having a party for kids. How much information can be gathered from just having a party for kids? P B G, P B J sandwiches, and so what I got from that for the most part is. You know, just checking and and being empathetic and and listening to other people, one of the things that Ted talks about is he says. The greater number of people, now, we always used to hear, um, um, too many cooks in the kitchen spoils the. The broth or whatever, something to another effect, depends on it, you know, the soup, the broth, or whatever. However, in his analogies of the things that he talks about, he talks about really becoming innovative or thinking outside the box. He never used that terminology, but he said the greater number of people that you have, it enables you to have a greater number of ideas. Looking at all of your stakeholders, not just the people who normally lead your organization. But everybody has a voice in that to be able to help you with your guiding principles that are gonna help you. To to move a district forward, and so he talks about the rule of three where he says that. You have your um, your success or the lack of success. You have to be able to monitor it, not at the end of of whatever. The rule of three says employ after three hours, after three days, after three weeks, after three months. You don't wait until the end of a semester, the end of a year. You know, you have to monitor on a regular basis if your goal is to. Achieve excellence and to have um, um. Uh, to create a culture of improvement, so everything that we learned, um. There was a really interesting um, session where he talked about how Abraham Lincoln was shrinking. And I'm like, what the? Abraham Lincoln that, you know, at the Wash- at in Washington, that he continued to shrink. Well, after they assessed and watched and went through all of these different, they just discovered that the reason why it was shrinking. Was because the birds were pooping on the head. And if you, you know, a- and it was just really, really kind of weird, you would have never thought that that was causing Lincoln to. To shrink and shrink, so they had to figure out what to do, and then they did lights, and the lights didn't work, the lights caused the birds come. You know, so it was like, everything they did, it caused a reaction that made the situation worse. And so they had to figure, was it the lights that they put the lights on there to keep the birds away, or the lights made the birds come? I don't remember, but either way, there were a number of things that happened.
The lights attracted the bugs that attract.
The bug, right, that's it, the lights attracted the bugs that attracted, that that enabled the birds to come and poop on the head, and da, 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 da. So eventually what they ended up doing is taking the lights off of it to keep the the bugs from coming, thank you for that. To keep the bu- the birds from coming to get the bugs, I mean, it was, just think about the process that it took. The thoughts that it took, the number of people that had to research it to look at it, so that was really kind of um. Kind of cool, they also talked about, um, you know, the people who engage in a process, you know. We all know people who are critics, no matter what you say, no matter what innovation you come up with, oh, that ain't gonna work. You know, so they talked about that, they talked about people who are bystanders, they're never gonna participate in anything, they're just gonna kind of watch. And you have some people who may be um, bullies, and then you have some people who are navigators who are always trying to move forward. And so basically what he talked about is, he gave us a lot of exercises for um. Moving beyond beyond that, and and creating processes, he said, creating processes never fails. You know, it's just like we can fall back on our policies and our procedures because we have our policies and procedures, right? Something's not going right, oh, let me go to the policy, let me go to the procedure, and we can kind of get back on target. Well, he talked about us having processes, if we create these processes, these process will, processes will never fail us. People fail processes, but processes never fail, so we have to make sure that we have a guiding purpose in our, you know, have a mission. That we're working together, um, the thing that was kind of interesting, and I, and I know I can go on and on, but I'm gonna cut it out after this, but. The thing that was kind of interesting, he says, if you really want some people who can get in there and they can really be innovators. He said, your best innovators were changed, he said, is that science teacher. That's K five teacher, that special ed teacher. He said, these people who are dealing with problems all the time and has to fix things, he said, but you just never know. Who's gonna be the solution to your problem, and so increasing and having a number of people. The wisdom of the crowd accelerates improvement, and so. Um, I also have some information, um, this is what the um. I have another sheet, but you guys can throw it away later, but um. There was another sheet that kind of showed us where we are and where we're headed. And so I have that sheet that's here, these are the steps uh, for continuous improvement, so this was the whole process. Um, of where we started and where we're supposed to end over here with um. Uh, desired status, which is um. A system focused on improvement, so this is, these are the steps that he took for the process, right? That he's taken us through to try to get us to this desired um, point here. Um, these are some plans, and you guys can kind of look at these real quick. These are some plans that other school districts have that are completed, um. What do you call those, um, strategic plans?
That's the plan on the page, or exactly those.
You know, just, uh, we, we looked at everyone else's and kind of looked at where we thought, you know, which were nice and. You know, what we would change or whatever, so we should end up with a document that looks similar to that. So, now is it, anybody have any question? Oh, that's not for me to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Megan?
Sorry.
So when do you wrap off your. Strategic planning session, and when are we gonna get a document like this?
No, I'm not writing. We've spent this time training, we did not create. And what they were like, I thought it was a short amount of time, so that the round is taking the, um. So you, is moving everyone to the next.
Okay, so that's the meeting that will take place with um, district administrators as well as principals. Our building level administrators, so that's the next piece. And then Jeannie Marie, who also was a part of C S S, will help come in after Ted. And help us um, dig deeper in terms of the details off of the plan.
And that's June second, when she said.
That's a Friday, right?
Ted is June second, I have not. Correct, I haven't e- established the dates with Jeannie Marie just yet.
On June second, she's gonna send it out to see if anyone would like to.
Will any component of this be a part of the summer board meeting retreat?
I haven't gotten that far, um, I I I don't know yet, I don't know that I'm able to speak to you. I hope we can do it August, yes, cuz the process is new for me as well, so. Sure, we can always provide an update. I I I hope to be done. For for August, beginning of an August, beginning of the school year, August. With um, trying to check an opportu- or have an opportunity to have community meetings, so the community is aware of. Um, how different this process has been in terms of strategic planning, and to be, to be very honest. Um, I think it's more manageable in terms of what we're trying to do to, or what, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish to move, to move the district forward. And that would also go on our district website as well, so I'm not exactly sure about, um, try to anticipate time. How much time it will take, uh, but because of the process is new for me as well, I just don't wanna make any promises that we're unable to, to keep.
So are you, do you agree with um, Stacy as she talks about these last four meetings were. Kind of a training for us, you and your team to get to the June second meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think Dr. Brown knew that, I just missed that, that piece.
So I will say, um, when the press, I I don't know that I was, well. My thought process was, wow, we can do this in five sessions.
Right.
And you were thinking.
I don't know any different because I haven't engaged in the process.
Okay, shut, shut up.
And so, then, when we started getting closer to four and five, then my questions started coming to Ted. Like, okay, five is here and. Looking for some K P I's. Four or five-ish, and so, um, that's when I learned. The the training was around the cycle of continuous improvement and the change that is necessary to get us to that place. So really what he was doing was trying to change our mindset and our.
I understood.
As a way, as it relates to moving in that direction, it took me a minute to get there, um, but now I'm clear. I still got closer to the end.
I realized, and yeah, they got, it was about six hours, but I felt dumb towards the end, like.
You shouldn't have.
It was like you're saying, five, five was ambitious, you know, to get it going, but I was like, okay.
Not knowing, it was because of not knowing what we didn't know.
But what was lovely was to be able to see the students, the administrators, the parents, the board, and everybody's. You know, being valued and and being able to share, the students, like you said, they got up and they were like, I mean, they were. They're very young adults, but it was like, everybody felt like they had input on that, and so I guess if we move forward. If we can make sure that we are all, that we are always includes the. Thinking about questioning, asking, um, um, surveying, like you said, you know. Everyone, all of the constituents, you know, and not feeling like we can move this um. This train forward without having input from everybody.
Right, but the um, but the four sessions wasn't really an input, I mean, everyone participated, but it wasn't, um, that.
Oh, didn't create it.
Right, of of everyone pouring in, I think maybe that will be, you know, you know. More of everybody coming to a common language, a common understanding of of that, so I'm, I do hope, yeah. I do hope that, you know, all of those people that came, maybe thinking similarly that I thought. Will, will see something reflect, we'll see, we'll see a reflection of what was done before, because if they're thinking, oh, you know, we're all. Building this, then it's built somewhere else without them, will they see a reflection of their ideas or input in there? I will want, you know, will there be an opportunity, or will it even be necessary?
It's, I don't think that that's the intent.
Right, no, but.
Now it's.
Right.
Building level to.
To to, right, to bring it together.
Pieces together, but to dig deeper around the root cause analysis and what, what do we want when you look at the K P I, or these plans on the page? What are the topics that we agree on?
No, I understand that, just when there is all the people that came, and they're like, what, you know?
I don't, I don't think so.
Wouldn't want that to be an interruption, like the last.
Well, I think the sense that is designed for everybody who was in that space to be a part of what we're now going.
No, 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 I don't think that was, I mean, I'm just now seeing the bigger picture of how it was designed, I just wouldn't want anyone who did not. Maybe that was wrapped up towards the end.
Yeah, they talked about that, that's why that last pa- piece of paper that I just took around, and then he told us where we were, right? I don't know that I'd know. I think it was in the top line, he said we were.
I found it to be a good experience, although when we paid for it, I thought it was something we were paying for something else. I thought we were paying for the three H, you know, some guy. So I, I, I did think that, but then I also thought that what we did receive, although that's not what I thought we were paying for. Was worth what we paying for, and very, very, I'm not saying, you know, I thought it was very well done. Um, it was engaging, it was informative, it it systematic, and you know, and and applied, you know, I mean. You could tell he knew a lot about our district and how, you know, he had, um, I'm sure he talked to Dr. Brown, and that's, you know, some of our needs beforehand. So that it was good, but it is not what I thought we purchased. I don't know, right, so I'm gonna just jump in there, like, don't.
I think that, like, the big picture was, um, valuable strategies to, um. Build a culture necessary to get the work done, because all of the things that he did was teaching us how to honor. Depending on the small walls in which we work, and then he showed us how to. Identify the strengths within our team members and let them know that we value them. And to help them to see, um, strengths that they may not have known that they had. And then another strategy that was a part of this work is how to. Gather, again, the most people because this activity was gathering the most so that. The ways it can bring us closer to a solution, and so with that, he played the foundation. On how to build that culture. And so, yeah, because if if we, if we don't enter any work, particularly in this film. Without the foundation that he played, without those strategies. We'll flounder. Yeah, you just sort of, you know.
So I feel like, those of you who were part of the, one of the, kind of, training. Uh, and emerging into, you know, just how to create synergy to move this forward. That you have to be a part of phase two. To help us move to the product that we hope to get out of this, and that is. Kind of a deep dive, um, into what it is that we want our, that product over there. To contain.
Well, I think, I, I think I agree with Dr. Brown in that it could work with a smaller representation as she's. Designed it for, but. Um, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that smaller group not to include the bo- a a board representation. I could, you know, maybe we wouldn't include some of the other stakeholders, but, um, so I wouldn't say that it's necessary at all.
We did, you have all the people.
Forty people, like, how many people they've been, so, so, yeah.
So some of those folks though would.
Well, I mean, definitely, she, who she has coming is the, the, her cabinet, and. I requested that board members be, um.
Included in that.
Included in that, um, yeah, I think that'll be fine. But going to what, um, Dr. Gladys said, one, and then she reminded me, one thing I think was that is because. We had forty people there, and they were leaders in their own little, you know, mass leader, you know, on their own within what they do. And those, whatever change comes, those people will be better able to weather it and support. Cause he brought them to see the input, so at least having those people there that that have an understanding, that he got into. Uh, the reading groups or, you know, the math team, so that's, that is valuable, that you have thirty or forty ambassadors for when this change. It does come, so they'll already know there's gonna be more in place, they'll be able to recognize an attractor, they'll be able to. To sit tight and wait for the bigger thing, so that, that is good, that was gonna give, give, to make tiny ambassador. Forty of them in our district, but then, make sure that when the time goes to change, and so, they already have a few of it. So they won't, you know, get that shock, you know, get that shotgun running, so that, I think, building that culture was about, well, important. But I didn't have them, but that's what we were still. But it, but I, but I see it as necessary, yeah.
Very good, um, so yeah, I just look forward to the next steps in that, and. Are there opportunity for the board to participate as we continue on through the process? Moving on to discussion of district organization, I'm sure.
Um, yes, the question, page, to provide a copy of the district organizational part. Uh, this is what we. Are projecting actually for the twenty threes, twenty fours in the year, as it stands, and, um. I'm sure if there are any questions around this stuff.